Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Lowell's Zone of Appeals for June 27th. This meeting is being held in person as well as options to join the meeting virtually from a computer tablet or smartphone device, or you could also call into the meeting via phone as well. Just a reminder to folks, if you plan on speaking tonight or on behalf of petition or coming to the lectern, if you could just state your name and address for the record and sign in, please. And also, if folks can just turn off or turn their phone to vibrate to not interrupt the meeting, we'll go into the meeting now under Continued Business. ZBA-2023-3, the variance, the applicant is 505 Capital Partners LLC, property located at 38 to 40 Swift Street. 505 Capital Partners LLC has applied to Lowell's Zone of Appeals to subdivide the existing lot at 38 to 40 Swift Street and construct a new two-family dwelling on the new lot. The property is located in the traditional neighborhood, two-family zoning district, and requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum front edge, minimum and maximum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback, minimum rear yard setback under Section 6.1.10 to exceed the maximum lot curb cut, and for any other relief required on the Lowell's Zone ordinance. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Cornerstone, representing the applicant this evening. I believe that this has been continued on a couple of occasions. We had wrapped up what I believe was all the site plan questions and layout concerns, and ultimately, we were just waiting on Mr. Stephen Stoll from the Historical Department to do a final review of the architectural plans that were provided. I do have a printed out email here, if I could bring that up forward for you folks.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Lanier, yes, please, thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, just to summarize, our architect for the particular project was able to sit down with Mr. Stoll. They reviewed the original design, the revised design with the modification to the front of the building to ensure that it was consistent with the neighborhood and that Mr. Stoll didn't believe that it would take away from the, I wouldn't say historical, because it's not a historic zone, but the in-kind view of the neighborhood over the, you know, larger picture. He seemed completely comfortable with it from my discussions with him and the email provided, and based off of that, I'd ask if we could move forward with this petition and hopefully get these guys out there and get this built this year if we can.
Thank you, Ms. Lanier, for your comments, sir. So now we just open up comments to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. We'll open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a good example of how this process should work. When the petition originally came before us, it was frowned upon by the DPD department, but the developer did not frown upon that. He said, "Let's get to work. Let's cooperate and tell me what you'd like to see there." And our very qualified DPD staff worked very diligently with an enthusiastic developer in Mr. Lanier. They revised the plans, and here we are, presented this evening with a project that I believe should win approval. It's certainly going to win my vote. I believe that the revisions that were made are significant, I believe wholeheartedly with the comments issued by Mr. Stoll. And before I conclude, I would just like the perspective of our DPD representative here on how he feels with respect to the revisions.
Mr. Katrumbis, the floor is yours, sir.
Sure. We feel positively. I spoke to the staff member assigned to this project. I didn't see any updated comments from her, so I'd say she feels the revisions were incorporated and, you know, everything is good to go.
That's great to hear. I concur. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but I agree with my fellow board member here, Mark Brier, that this is a great project process that has been followed. I do, though, would like to see the site plan corrected. So I was expecting the site plan to be updated.
Please refresh my memory, Mr. McCarthy, what it is that maybe I could have missed.
Right.
I apologize.
Let me see if I'm looking at the site plan that's correct.
So I have a revised site plan dated 2/8/22.
Aha.
I'm not sure what you have.
Yes, that's the same one I have.
Okay.
Okay. So we don't have walkways at the front doors shown.
Ah, I did ask for that. Yes, I do. I 100% remember that. I can provide that for you, no problem.
So I think we'd like to make the condition that you provide an updated site plan.
100%.
And that impacts the impervious cover calculation?
Yeah, I think it would be fairly minimal, though, right? Let's see where we're at. So Lot 1 has, you know, I guess you would consider that under landscape open space, where 50% is required, and we're at 45.2% requesting a variance, and we are 15 feet from the sidewalk in the front there. So four feet by 15 feet, 60 square feet, 120 square feet, and then to 6412, I'd put a somewhere around 42.5%, but still requiring a variance, because we already are currently asking for the variance.
I'd just like the documents to...
Absolutely. I can provide that on the updated plan.
On those two kinds. And then the third one is landscaping. I do believe, I think it was my fellow board member, asking for the eight carnivorous shrubs and the two deciduous trees to be identified.
Yep, we did show that. I think we went over that at the last hearing. They're shown on the bottom as a gray birch and a Mission Abervady, and they're shown on either side of the units A and B. I got you on that one.
You know, we're a team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
So it's just the one condition, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. I should say same sentiments as my fellow board members, and I had the same questions as Mr. McCarthy. I'm going through my copious notes that I took at the first hearing we've had.
Well, it's been so long, I apologize.
That's quite all right, but...
Mr. Stoll's been busy, and John was on vacation, the architect, for some time, so...
Yep.
But thank you.
Yep. I appreciate it, Mr. Lanier, and I appreciate certainly that you, you know, went back to the drawing board and worked with DPD to get, you know, to work these things out. It is a, it's a project that probably needs to be done in that, needs to be done in that area with that space that's left there, and I think it'll be beneficial to the neighborhood, and it just, it's great that, again, I know there were some questions from DPD previously, but you went back, worked with them, worked with, did pretty much get everything to their satisfaction from what I gather, and I think it's a project that will work for the city and be a great benefit to the neighborhood, and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do echo the sentiments of the fellow board members, especially Mr. Brier, because I take it, I take the fact that the process works, and the fact that you went back to the drawing board and compromised, and you were willing to make it that it's conducive to the neighborhood instead of just putting a piece of blocks out there, I think it's commendable. It's a nice design as well, so you will be having my vote, and I more so appreciate the effort that your team took.
Thank you.
To try and make it conducive to the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Mr. Lanier, like my colleague said, I think, you know, you, especially in your team, it's been very compromising and kind of working with DPD, us, Historic Board, just to come to a final plan that's going to be beneficial to everyone involved. So, you know, I'm always very impressed with you, Ms. Lanier, and your professionalism and your team, you know, your high-quality work. You've done many projects in the city, so, you know, this, I'm sure, will be another thing that's going to be a big benefit, not just to the potential people who live here, but also a big benefit to the city, as we all know, housing is a big need still throughout the Commonwealth. So I'm in favor. We just have the one condition that we talked about, the updated site plan, Ms. Lanier, if you...
Absolutely.
...amenable to that, we'll go forward with a motion. Can we have a motion, please?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-3 for variance for 505 Capital Partners at 3840 Swift Street with the condition that we have a revised site plan provided by the applicant to show the front walkways and correct the impervious cover, square footage areas, as well as the open landscape area.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve a condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve with condition.
Ms. Lanier, your project's been approved.
Excellent.
Wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Going on under Continued Business, we have ZBA-2022-21, a variance, the applicant is Manuel Vermilio at 225 Cross Street. Manuel Vermilio has applied to the Zone of Appeals for the construction of a deck and associated stairs at 225 Cross Street. The property is located in the traditional multifamily zoning district and requires a variance for side yard setback under Section 5.1 and any other relief required on the Lowell's Zone ordinance. Good evening, sir. Can you just tell a little bit about your project this evening?
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Board. Manuel Vermilio has started the building of the additional stairs and the deck right in the middle of the construction by realizing that it was not enough space for the stairs to have it inside of the home. That was basically the main reason. Now, the reason why we're asking for variance is because we believe that it does not impact the shape or topography of the land. It does not detriment to the public good, and it does not, you know, impact the intent of zoning. That's basically...
Okay. Thank you, sir, for that overview of your project. Now we're going to open up questions or comments to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. We're going to open up questions and comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. In light of the comments that we received from the Planning Department, they seem to be agreeing with you that this really does meet the criteria for variance and has minimal impact, and judging from the neighborhood, they seem to be supportive of this at the moment. So I agree with you. I think this has minimal impact and would be well-served to receive a variance. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with that, that the request is fairly minimal. You do meet a special hardship on this. The lot is very, very small, and the DPD does indicate that, you know, the deck and the porch will be set above, directly atop the property line, so it's not impacting the land below it, so it's above area. So I can see granting the variance in this instance. It seems it meets the criteria, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I do agree with my fellow board members. I think this is minimal impact. I've passed by the property a couple of times. It seems like it's a well-structured building, and the intent is to make the neighborhood, you know, look good and improve that section. So I think you've accomplished that, and I think a variance is warranted, so I'll be in favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look favorably upon this petition and have no further questions of the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. Sir, like my colleague said, I think this is also very minimal impact. I think it's more of a, you know, you're just tightening up clerico. You would have just did it, but you need a few foot of relief, you know, in deck and stairs. It's, you know, it's going to be a good addition to the home, but also it'd just add value to the property and to the neighborhood as well, you know. And I also wanted to say, just from the last meeting, you know, unfortunately, we couldn't talk about it because you came at the end, so I do want to apologize for that, but, you know, you did it right. You came, you know, the variance you're seeking is very minimal, and I think it'd be a great addition to your home, so I wish you the best of luck. So I'll be in support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
If we have no further comments, we'll vote, have a motion for the variance.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-21 for a variance at 225 Cross Street for a variance for side yard setback.
A motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve.
Member Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve.
All right, so you've been approved. Wish you the best of luck. Thank you for coming out this evening. Have a good night. Thank you. Thank you, folks. Moving on, under Continued Business, ZBA-2022-29, a variance, the applicant is Regina Maderos, property located at 33 Ludlum Street. Regina Maderos has applied to the Zone of Appeals, seeking retroactive variance approval for a pool and covered patio at 33 Ludlum Street. The property is located in the traditional single-family zoning district and requires a variance approval per Section 5.1 for relief from the minimum side yard setback, minimum floor area FAR requirements, per Section 4.3.5 for relief from the necessary structure setback requirements, and any other relief required on the Lowell's Zone ordinance. Is anyone here this evening for 33 Ludlum Street?
I'm online.
Oh, yes, yes. Go ahead. If you could just state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about your project.
Yes, Regina Maderos, and the address is the 33 Ludlum Street. It's my house.
Good evening. Thank you, ma'am. Can you just tell us a little bit about your project and what are you seeking tonight?
Well, I did it. I didn't know I needed a permit. I put the pool, and then my friends told me as long as I had a pool and my backyard was fenced in, it was okay. But then after when I went to the City Hall and asked questions about it, they said I needed to get a permit for the pool, and because it wasn't meeting the measurements required, I might need it to move. But if I moved the pool, I think I'm probably going to rip the line or even destroy the pool, because it's been there for almost five years. I, this is my first time I buy a house. It's been almost seven years. I have three dogs. My neighbor next door to me, she had a bunch of trees in the backyard, so my dogs would go outside and lay down to shake. They like to be in the yard a lot in the summertime. So when I did a patio, I thought about why I don't close in so I can have a shade for the dogs, but also, I didn't know I needed a permit for. So until I went to City Hall, I found out that whatever I did wasn't measuring, it did not measure the standard measurements for it, and I also needed permits. So what I'm requesting is I wanted to legalize everything that I did, and that was my request for it. I didn't want to take it down because I did put money into it, and I think also it will give me a value to my property as well. But if I have to work with, they have to take it down, I'll do it. I just want it to be correct under the law. I don't want to do things that it's not right in my property. I want to correct. I want to work with City Hall to see what we can do that I can legalize what I did so far.
Thank you, Ms. Maderos, for your summary and for your candor. I appreciate it. I'm sure my colleagues, too. So now we'll just open up the hearing to the public. If you have no other comments, ma'am?
No, I mean, if I'm willing to work, what needs to be done? When I went to the City Hall, they told me what I need to do. I worked on everything that I need to do. I just wish if I could leave everything the way it is. My youngest daughter, she's 10 years old. Even yesterday, she had her friends over to play with her in a pool. So, I mean, if I have to take it down, I'll take it down, but if I could please, could keep it the way it is and then have a penalty on it, I would work on it. I would pay for it if that's the case.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
I also, I also don't want to, I also wanted to work what the law is standard for it. I don't want to be in a situation that I didn't know, like I said, I didn't know until when I went to City Hall, I found out. Because once you buy a house, you think everything is yours, but apparently there's so much that you can do from your fence in to your property. I had no clue about that until when I went to the zone. I'm sorry. It's complicated to say all the names. But like, until I found out, until they explained it to me, that's when I realized if I knew it before, I would have done it the correct way.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Maderos. So we'll just open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, sir, you want to state your name and address for the record?
Richard Biamanu, 76 Belvedere Circle. I'm here with my sister. We own the house together at 35 Ludlum. We're a little confused on what we're looking for here. If it's a swimming pool, the plot plan says an addition to the right-hand side of the house that goes over 19-plus feet, almost the property line to the neighbor. So what do we, it's kind of confusing what's being looked for here. So they're looking for a variance for the swimming pool, and they're looking for a variance for the addition that they've put onto the side of the house?
Let me, let me defer to DPD. Mr. Katrumbis, do you want to, so they're looking for a variance for the pool and what else?
So they, they put a patio on the side of the house, and they put a roof over the patio.
Structure, correct.
So that it's shaved, shaded. But it's not...
It's not...
It's not like an addition to the, you know, somewhere you go inside the home. It's, they put out a patio and put a roof.
So obviously, on the plot plan, it says a roofed addition.
Yeah.
So we don't want it to morph, that the house is morphed more and more. So they're looking for 19 feet. They need 10 to the summer, 25. So they're looking for a 19-foot relief. I mean, the gentleman next door isn't here. My sister's lived there for 40 years. I mean, it's right against the neighbor's house. Again, we're not against the pool. There used to be a pool there. They took it out, put a new pool in. That's fine. But things are starting to grow over there, along with things that are now, we have trucks parked there with dump trailers, with bobcats, with dump trucks that go down the street... that go down the street. So we're having a, a problem here that things are morphing. And again, that, that's a lot to ask for, 19 feet, 10 to the summer 25. I mean, the patio's fine. They can have a patio, shade umbrella, whatever. But these things are starting to morph over there. And we just don't want it to be a detriment to the property. Like, I mean, if you were to come look at the house for sale today, you'd drive by those trucks and you'd be like, you'd keep on driving. So it's starting to be a detriment to the neighborhood and to the value of the home. So we're just asking that, you know, if they want a patio, that's fine. Just can't have that structure over it.
Okay. Thank, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, seeing that portion of public hearings closed? What were the questions or comments to the board now? The Chair organizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Three, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple of questions, just to try to clarify. Because, I mean, it's just, I understand that the, the layout of the lot and everything, it's kind of small. And I certainly, you know, can see a pool going back there, but you are literally right up to the border, two, like less than two feet to the border of your neighbor on 29. Is it 29? 29 Ludlum. So I'm, maybe, maybe I missed it. I mean, was the pool there when you purchased the property or you put it in?
No, it was a huge pool, an in-ground pool.
It was an in-ground pool. It is, it's, so it's an, it's an above-ground pool now, right?
No, it is an above-ground pool, which is 12 by 12.
Yeah.
And we did like the shaded period. There's no walls. It's just the shade. And there's like four poles holding the shade on the side of, on my patio. On, it goes on the side of my driveway. The trucks parking outside is where my husband's company, you know, he works, my running lot works. And then they come home. We both live on the same street and we parked outside. I didn't know it was a Eagle Park outside on your street. But if that's the case, we'll move the cars somewhere else, the trucks somewhere else. But once you come home late from work, eight, nine o'clock, you park outside. But if that's gonna be a big problem, we'll move the cars. Even we have to pay a place to put the cars, we'll do that, the trucks. But it's no walls. It doesn't have insulation. It doesn't have nothing. I have a fence. All I did was a roof over the patio. So I could have shades, like I said, even if I said, I could put an umbrella, it's true. But I have three dogs, German Shepherd, Golden Retriever, and a Boston Terrier. Two are big dogs. And they like to be outside. I go to work every day, six days a week. My only day off is Mondays. And then I don't want, I keep them inside the house already on the some, on the winter time. So in the summertime, I like to have them outside.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm just, I understand. I'm just trying to, we're, we're dealing with some setbacks here.
If, if.
I mean, I know, I know there was some brought up about the, about the parking.
If it's gonna make people happy that I have to take the pool down, I'll take the pool down then.
Okay.
Am I 10-year-old gonna cry? If, if people wants to make my neighbor cry over the pool, let's do it.
I don't think that's what a lot of people want to do, ma'am. I think we're, we're trying to, trying to figure out, we've got some setbacks here that are in violation of zoning.
Like I said at the beginning, like I said, I apologize. Like I said at the beginning.
Ma'am, ma'am.
If I knew I had it to be five feet in from the fence, obviously, you don't want to spend $6,000 on a pool if you're not doing it correctly.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you please, can you please let me ask my question? I'm sorry.
Sure.
I don't want to be rude.
I'm sorry.
But I'm trying to get to the, we're trying to get to the point of why you're here. And that we've got some questions that need, need, need asking. And, and with all due respect, you're going off on a tangent on other things that are not sticking to the point of what I'm asking.
I apologize.
I don't think people really want to, you know, it doesn't seem like people want to take away your pool. It just seems it's very tight and put, close up to the setbacks. And I'm trying to figure out if there's a way we can, you can move it a little bit to get it away so it's in more compliance with zoning. Because right now.
Yes.
You are, it's supposed to be five feet from the borders, from, from the property board, property lines.
Correct.
And you are less than two feet. I don't even think we have, do we have exact dimensions, Peter, of how far they are from the, on the pool, as far as the dimensions are? 1.7? One, little less than two feet. Geez. I mean, I know, I mean, kids want to play in the pool, I know, but there's a lot of splashing and, and, you know, that's, that's, that's why we set these setbacks, to try to like, you know, help, help your, help you out and help the neighbors out. I know it's gonna be at a heavy cost, but I'm, my question is, is it a possibility that you can move the pool a little bit over toward, you know, away from the property line?
Absolutely.
Even if we, if we, you know, we condition it like you.
Absolutely.
I'd like, I'd like to get it within zoning if possible, but if it's not gonna, if it's not possible, we may be able to work with a, a number that's satisfactory.
No, no. Yeah, we can do that. Yes, I can work on it. Yes.
Okay. The next thing, what about the shed? I mean, the shed is literally on the property line, on the right hand.
The shed was already there when I bought my house.
It was? Okay.
Yes. And it even says on, when I bought the house, it showed how everything was before we, we purchased it.
Okay. And, Three, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I'll have a question with the butters next door at 35. Do you have any issues with the shed being there? If you can step up to the, because she said it was, it's been there the whole, when she purchased the property, it's been the whole time.
We're not worried about the, the shed nor the pool.
Okay.
Proposed addition, or roofed addition over the patio. So she can leave the pool where it is. The shed can stay where it is. We're just worried about that addition possibly morphing.
No, I, I completely understand that. But I'm also, I'm looking at from, and you're on the opposite side. You're not at 29. You're on, you're on 35.
They can leave the pool there, and they can leave the shed there. No problem.
Yep. Well, it's on the opposite side of your property. So you don't, you don't mind that, but I'm.
The other gentleman, it's close to, I mean, it's up against his window.
It's up, that's what I mean. And then I gotta, with, as a board, we gotta take that into account as well, as far as, even though they're not here, technically you oppose it. I mean, it's something, we, we still have to look at the zoning code to, to make sure we have criteria we have to follow to make sure that it.
Correct.
Lies within that criteria. And.
It's not a couple of feet. It's 19 feet.
Yeah.
That used to be part of the driveway, I believe.
So the next step was, my, my next question was gonna be on the, on the patio. I was just wanting to start, I just want to start with the pool, the setbacks for the pool and the shed. So, I mean, if the shed was pre-existing, it was there. I mean, I can, it, I presume the shed can't be moved easily, correct, ma'am?
No. I mean, if I have to take it down, I'll take it down. It really, it's not a bad thing for me. It was already there. We used to, to put some tools, a snow blower there.
Those, yeah, those.
Even when I purchased my house, my, my backyard was, was already all fenced in. So we did the, we did the patio and then I did the shade, the shade over the patio. That's all. It's not, that doesn't have no walls, no insulation, nothing.
No, no. My question, that, my next question was gonna be, do you utilize a shed at all for any storage of materials?
I do. I do for the snow blowers, the, the shovels.
Okay.
That's how we use for.
Yep. No, no, no. That's, that totally, that makes total sense. So that's, that's something, something we're gonna take into account. I mean, as far as the covering on the, the roof over the patio area, so what, I mean, what is, what is it, what is the roof, what's the material? What did you use to make that?
The material is plastic. It's clear plastic. It's not shingle or anything like that. It's just.
Okay. So it's, so it's not, it's not a wo, it's not wooden? It's not like, it's not a permanent structure, you're saying, correct?
No, no.
So it can be easily removed if?
Yeah, I could. But, you know, you buy the material, you did it, and then, and then your next door neighbors, they're not.
Could it be similar to like?
We talked to them. They were okay with it. So.
Okay. Could it, could it be similar, I guess, to a car, to like a canopy or a carport or something?
It could be. But, I mean, but I purchased that plastic roof at Home Depot and, and we talked to the 29 neighbors. They said they were okay with it. So.
Okay. All right. That's all I have right now. I'm gonna listen to my fellow board members. I mean, I'm, again, no problems with the shed. The pool is a little bit, I don't, I mean, certainly, I don't want to put you in that position that you're gonna move it. But I really, we really do have to look at the fact that it's literally, it's, I think it's a little too far outside the realm of, of, outside the variance code, variance code for my taste. And I think, I'll listen to my other fellow board members of what their thoughts are. But I think, I really think we might, I may want to consider if you were gonna move it, we can try to work something on that. Have you move it over and back a little bit. Because if you, how far away, just, just, I guess, the next question real quickly. How far away is the pool from your house? It says 10 feet, but the site plan says 99, or I don't know if that's 9.9 feet, Peter?
It's, it's, it's at the back of the yard. It's like almost where the shed is. On your left, the pool is on the right side.
No, I see the pool, but I'm just trying to figure out how far away it is, is it from the house. So if we move it, I mean, what are we working with?
I probably will have to put in the middle of the backyard.
Peter?
I'm with you that the site plan's a little confusing, but I have the GIS open. So this is a rough estimation, but it looks like there's about like 20 feet between the house and the pool.
That's from the, from the GIS?
Just from the GIS, yeah.
Okay. Well, we may need an updated site plan to clarify this. If we're gonna move that, if we're gonna consider moving the pool, we're gonna definitely need an updated site plan. And then try to work from there. It's how much, how much we, we can work with there. So. But I'll listen to my other fellow board members is what they have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The Chair organizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, it's tough to make a decision on this from the standpoint that it's, one, it's retroactive. I, I understand the neighbor who's, was speaking not in favor, but I don't think he was speaking not in favor as much as you, as you said, he didn't want it to grow into something else. I mean, you got the shed, you got the pool, and now you're thinking, what's next? I don't know how to condition that. But to Member Callahan's point, we, we would need an updated site plan just to make sure that it conforms with, you know, what we think it should be. And then I think we should be able to make some kind of decision then. I'm, I'm on the fence as well. I mean, if the, the pool does look like it's not standard, and it is obviously too close to, to the butters' property. But again, if, if butters are saying they're okay with it, it's, I'd have to, yeah, I, I think I'd have to segue into my, the opinion of the other board as well. But I, I think we need more additional information before we can make any intelligent decisions on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. The Chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With, with your authorization, I'd like to call to the podium the, the neighbor who spoke in opposition. I have a question for him.
Yes, of course, Mr. Brier. Yes.
Thank you. I heard your concerns. And you did, you did state for the record that the shed in the pool was not your primary reason for opposition.
Correct.
Now, with respect to the roof over this, what are we calling it, a patio area?
Correct. Yes.
Are you just looking to ensure that that doesn't eventually become enclosed and become a permanent addition to the house? Is that, is that?
If you were to do a site walk out there.
Yeah.
You, you wouldn't be in favor of it right now.
Yeah.
I'll give you a background. I was the building commissioner of Tana Middleton for nine-and-a-half years. I dealt with zoning for a long time. So this is a tough one. And it's, I see how it's going down the road. So we just don't want a problem over there when we go to sell the property that it is, again, those little additions that have been put on year after year, that, you know, the screen porch now becomes part of the kitchen, which now, it's a structure. That's a full-blown structure over there. The front of it's all, all panelled off. It's got a plastic top on it. And again, we just don't want to see it morph into something. So I don't know how you would condition it to say if they sold the house, it's gonna be removed. Because now that's gonna go on their deed. So I'd look for something to be put on the deed that says, there's a stipulation that, that will never be closed in. So again, we're not worried about the pool. There used to be a pool in the backyard. They've made a nice house there. The backyard used to have an in-ground pool that was, had trees growing out of it when it was, they left the house. And the shed's been there. Don't have a problem with it. It's that big, huge side addition now. Or covered patio.
No, I hear you.
So.
I hear you. I have the same fear that that would become living space, permanent living space. But at that point, I think that if they ever tried to turn that into permanent living space, that would be a heck of a hurdle that they'd have to jump over before this board, just because of where it's situated.
Yeah. And it's connected to the house.
Yeah.
Roof, the roof is connected to the other roof of the house.
Right.
So it's not like a, say, an umbrella that, you know, a shade space that rolls out, rolls in. We'd have no problem. But that is now a structure attached to that house, within two feet of the neighbor's house.
Right.
Excuse me? Excuse me?
Thank you.
Could I please?
Thank you, sir.
Say something?
Just, just one minute, Ms. Maderos. Mr. Brier has the floor. If he has questions for you, I ask. But right now, it's Mr. Brier's time to make comments and ask questions. So just hold on one minute, Ms. Maderos.
Thank you.
Mr. Brier, go ahead, sir.
I would be more than happy to allow the homeowner to speak if she wishes to do so.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Maderos.
Okay. I have a patio. It's a patio with pavers. And I built a grill on it. So I'm not making that a home or someone's gonna live there. I have, I have a grill outside and the patio is pavers. Like I said, I have no walls. All I have is a fence around it.
Anything else to add?
And, no. And then I have a sliding door that brings us outside to the patio.
Right. Well, I certainly wouldn't be in favor of seeing that turned into permanent living space.
No, I'm not doing that.
I don't think we could achieve that.
That's not our plan.
But here's my other big, here's my other concern. And I, during my tenure on the board, I haven't come across a situation where we're dealing with the placement of a pool. And quite frankly, that, that's my biggest concern here. I don't know if the board has set any precedent in the past, or how they react when we come across a pool that was improperly installed and not in, in the right location. I'm, I'm really worried about safety.
I.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily, at this point, advocating for the removal of the pool, or the relocation. But I, I certainly would like the benefit of some additional thought, whether that come from the city or one of my colleagues on this board, before I make a final judgment on whether we need to move that pool. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. The Chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm a little stumped by all of the, all the changes that have been made to the site that don't comply with city zoning. I agree with my fellow board member, Mr. Brier, that the, the roof addition, a roof over addition label on the site plan is probably the most problematic. I was hoping actually to see comments from the building department. Peter, is that possible? Or did we get anything from the building department? Or did we ask? Because the applicant just stating that she's got a grill under this structure, to me, that's another violation because grills have to be 10 feet away from buildings and porches, I believe. So that would be a, another reason for this structure to be changed.
We don't have anything, but we can have the building department chime in.
Excuse me?
Yeah. The, the city also does seem to have a lot of structures over patios. Structures over patios are common in a lot of neighborhoods. They're often the prefab metal structures over patios, not a wooden one. But nonetheless, they're, they're. they're, they're, and then there's also a prefab that you can get at Lowe's or Home Depot that you can put over a patio. But it's certainly not a roof over an addition, and it certainly does feel more temporary in nature. I don't know, I don't know how this roof structure got built, kind of a little nervous that it may not have foundations that are significant. It seems like I'd like to see building, Inspection Services weigh in on this and just kind of advise us whether this should be removed anyway, because it doesn't meet what the city requires for structures regardless. So I'd be in favor of this continuing until we get those conditions. And then I'd also would like to see maybe the applicant and the neighbor maybe have some conversation about what's agreeable here. I think your, the neighbor mentioned that the pool doesn't pose any real issue, it's really what's going on, on the site that seems to just be creeping into a situation that is untenable as far as what the neighborhood really should have to bear. So, that being said, I'd like to see us try to get some comments from the building department regarding the structure, whether it's something that we can find a way to condition that maybe part of the roof is removed, and that it remains a temporary structure, and there's no intent for this to ever become a structure that would support a addition. Maybe there's a condition that we could put on it, but I'd like to just know more about the comments from the building department if I could. No further questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. You know, I, I would agree that, Ms. Maderos, I think, you know, you're trying to do the right thing, coming and, you know, and trying to get a variance and see what's allowed and what's, what can be done in terms of regulations for the pool and the patio and all that. You know, I think, obviously, we have some concerns from the neighbors, valid concerns as well in terms of this additional patio or, or structure, maybe eventually even transforming into some kind of enclosed or kind of living unit. I think for me, I, if we were to move forward, I, I would like to see that as a condition that this, this won't be enclosed or transformed into a living structure, as my colleague said. But I'm also in favor of just getting more information in terms of the foundation and what, what the structure is, how it's built, and if it's appropriate or even safe, like my colleague said. Sort of, if we're all in agreeance, we can talk about continuing this matter, and, and Mr. Contrumbas, if you, you can just have, you know, inspection services or folks from the building departments kind of, just kind of weigh in on this project just to see this destruction patio and see what can be done, or what's appropriate, and what's, and the big thing is what's, what's safe. So, so Ms. Maderos, we're going to continue this matter to, to a future meeting, just, just so we can get all the information regarding this structure, and, and again, great advice from Mr. McCarthy. I think, Ms. Maderos, if you and the neighbor want to just get together and talk, you know, I think it'd go a long way in terms of, you know, what, what can work for the property and work for the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and again, I, I think a lot of people here tonight are not, you know, they don't want to take away anything from you, a pool, a shed, a structure, anything, we just.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
We, we just want to make sure everything's done, you know, as safely and, and appropriate as possible for everyone involved, the neighbors and neighborhood, just to make sure it's, you know, safe. I think the key word, at least for me, it's, it's, Mr. Brier commented, to make sure everything's safe. So, Mr. Contrumbas, when is our next scheduled meeting?
The next scheduled meeting is July 25th. However, there's a rule for six items per meeting, so that agenda is filled, so it would have to go before the board on August 8th.
Okay, that, that's, that sounds good. So we'll continue this matter to August 8th, unless I see any objections from my colleagues, I don't see any.
Well, a couple of things, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Callahan.
So, Peter, I just want to make sure that the pool is considered an accessory structure, correct? That's why we're, that's why we're here, we need a variance on that too as well. We're going to need some, we're going to need updated site plans, we're going to need some updated site plans that demonstrate the setback of the pool currently from the building structure, because the site plans we have now are not, don't, don't demonstrate that. And actually, looking at the site plan, the 99 that I was looking at, I think that's actually topography, the topographical thing, it's not, it doesn't show what the, what the distance is between the pool. We're trying, I, which, we really, I don't think we really want to make you move your pool, ma'am, but I think we really need to like look at the possibility of you having to move it to save on zoning, zoning code enforcement, and, I mean, right now, right now, as, as, yeah, right now, as it appears, you're right up next to the border. And we really want to just dot all our i's and cross all our t's to see if the possibility of moving the pool will help, you know, get it within the zoning regulations, so we don't have to do a variance on that particular thing, and whether it's practicable. So that's, that's why I think you need new site plans to demonstrate that, so we can see what we're working with. And again, like, like I previously mentioned, I understand that the neighbor on 29 is not here, and whether or not, I don't know whether or not they, you know, oppose it, approve of it, or maybe they don't even know that this is going on, but we do have to look at the zoning code regulations and work with that, regardless of whether or not they're here or not speaking on it, so. Do you understand?
Ms. Maderos?
That I did on my site, on my neighbor's on 29 St., to them.
You're going to have to get updated the site plan.
Okay. So the site plan that I did order this time, it's not valid. I have to order another one.
We have to order another one that shows the distance between the pool and to the building, and I don't think there's anything else.
And the one, the one that I did, the one that I did had someone do it recently, it doesn't say the distance?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
It only states the distance from your house to the, to the lot line in the back. It doesn't state what the distance is between the lot line and the pool, between, between your house and the pool.
Okay. So what was the, so what did I request then first? Because I had a guy come in, and I need to call the measurements, so I have to have something else different than what this one did?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
We, we, yeah, we, we need to know what the distance is between the lot line and, between your house and the pool, because you are right up against the borderline for where the pool lays currently right now. You're inside, well inside, outside of zoning regulations, well, outside of zoning regulations on that, because if the distance between the lot line and the pool is supposed, from the lot lines, is supposed to be five feet. You're at 1.7 and 1.9, respect, 1.5 respectively, and that's really, really close.
Okay.
And we're just trying to figure out, you know, again, can we move the pool and try to get it closer, if, within zoning, if not close, at least, close enough that maybe the board can be a little bit more satisfied that, you know, a variance can be granted?
Sure, sure.
Because 1.5, 1.5, 1 and 1/2 feet is just very close, and again, like I said, kids jumping in the pool, anybody jumping in the pool, you splashing around, and water can, you know, water getting into your neighbor's properties in the back, at the back, it looks like that National Grid, or it looks like it's some sort of like utilities back there in the rear, in the rear of the property, I mean, who knows what can happen?
I agree.
I don't know, I don't know what this, I don't know what the layout is back there, but who knows what can happen if water starts seeping in back there and, you know, if it does anything.
I understand.
So that's why, that's why we want to, we want to get all that, like I said, cross all our i's and dot all our t's, so if we can get that, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Any, any other comments? The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Just, just as a clarification, I think, Sean, I think we're just looking for the dimensional characteristics in the backyard. I would suggest that the site plan just needs to show the dimensions. We can use that site plan that was presented, it just is missing some key dimensions. I would include, if we could, the overall depth of the backyard and the characteristic, dimensional characteristics of the pool. So if the pool's 12 by 12, maybe we show that, if the yard in the back there is 32 feet deep, then we show that, and then we just show the additional dimension between the pool and the structure, just that we understand exactly what you're playing with there and what the options could be, if that's all right.
Yeah, we can do math. That's, it's not a bad idea.
So, thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. All right. Ms. Maderos, so you heard the comments of the board. If you could just look into all the, the updated site plans, the, the dimensions, I know this is kind of a lot of information to kind of take in, but I always encourage people to reach out to the amazing staff at DPD, Mr. Contrumbas, all those people are very amazing, very helpful, so during regular office hours, I would contact them just for like the exact details of what, what, what the board's looking for, if that makes sense. Ms. Maderos?
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yes, of course, of course. So now, there's no further comments, we have a motion to continue this matter to August 8th.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-29 for variance for 33 Ledlam Street to be continued to August 8th.
Second?
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Callahan. Can we roll call, please?
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved continuance to August 8th.
Member Callahan?
Approved continuance to August 8th, 2022.
Member McCarthy?
Approved continuance to August 8th, 2022.
Member Brier?
Approved continuance.
Member Proko?
Approved continuance to August 8th, 2022.
All right, Ms. Maderos, your, your petition has been continued to August 8th, so we'll see you in, in a little bit on August 8th. And that, just to let the public know, this is the public hearing, there's no, we know the notices for this hearing. All right. Moving on to our next scheduled agenda item under new business, ZBA-2022-24, the petition is a variance. The applicant is JF27LLC, property located at 175 Dalton Street. JFC27LLC has applied to the zoning board of appeals, seeking approval to construct a new attached unit to an existing single-family home at 175 Dalton Street. The subject property is located in the traditional two-family zoning district and requires variance approval pursuant to section 5.1 for relief from the front yard setback requirement and minimum side yard setback requirement and any other relief required under Lowe's orders. Well, good evening, Ms. Lanier.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kenneth Lanier, Cornerstone Land Associates, representing the applicant, JF27. Mr. Chairman, just to start off, we've been in discussions with the director abudders, and we were hoping to be able to make some changes to the plan that would not just satisfy the director abudders, but also satisfy the engineering department based off of the comments we received from the engineering department. They were discussing some sidewalk extensions, tree removal, and we were hoping that we could gain, gain some extra time to address the neighbor's comments, make sure that the neighborhood was comfortable, and also have the opportunity to speak with engineering. So we were looking for a continuance this evening, if possible, to that August 8th hearing.
I, I think that, that makes total sense. There's a lot of comments and a lot of things that was brought up, so I, I thank you, Ms. Lanier, for your professionalism, and if I don't see any other comments from my colleagues.
Well, I guess to clarify, just before that, we get to that, I mean, certainly, we can grant a continuance, but I'm sure, Mr. Lanier, you reviewed the comments, there's a lot of stuff in here.
I did, yeah.
The floor plans weren't stamped, quite frankly, I'm not even, I was unclear as to what.
Well, actually, I guess my question on that was, I don't believe architectural plans require stamps, so I think that might have just been a mistake on the, on the deed of his apartment, but, but irregardless, we, we plan on revising those plans anyways. And, and again, there was a kind of a laundry list of engineering comments, especially ones, you know, we're getting into these stormwater permits now.
Yeah.
And I haven't had an opportunity to address stormwater on this particular property, so I'd, I'd like to be able to get that done, get engineering satisfied, discuss with the abutting neighbor how we want that layout. I know we had discussed with him that there was some, I guess I would call it, some drainage ponding issues that happened at the end of that road, and we don't want to contribute to that problem, so we're going to do our best to ensure that we take care of our side of things, and see if we can alleviate some of his, his concerns with that as well.
Okay. No, I was just, yeah, there was a laundry list of stuff, I just want to make sure that, what, that was the one thing I circled versus was the floor plans weren't stamped.
Absolutely.
But, again, you're probably right, they would need to be stamped, do they, Peter? I don't think they do. No. Yeah. Okay.
No problem. I, I'll work with DPD as well. I mean, we're going to go through the whole gamut, set up another meeting with the abutting neighbor next week, make the plan revisions. I just want to ensure that I can incorporate everybody's concerns.
Sure, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Any other comments, Mr. McCarthy? No? No? Nobody? Okay. If there's no further comments, we have a, a motion to continue this matter to our August 8th meeting.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-24 for variance for JAF27LLC at 175 Dalton Street to be continued to August 8th.
Motion by, motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Callahan. Can we roll call, please?
Vice Chair Peck?
Approved continuance to August 8th.
Member Callahan?
Approved continuance to August 8th.
Member McCarthy?
Approved continuance to August 8th, 2022.
Member Brier?
Approved continuance.
Member Proko?
Approved continuance, August 8th, 2022.
All right, Ms. Lanier, your petition has been approved, continues to August 8th.
Excellent.
We'll see you in a little bit, sir, and.
I'll, I'll work my tail off, see if we can get everything put together. I know you guys are pushing out these agendas, so I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Ms. Lanier. Have a good evening, sir. Thank you for coming out this night. And just, just for the public record, this is the public notice for the petition. There'll be no other public notice required for public notice purposes. Moving on to our next scheduled agenda item under new business, we have ZBA-2022-31. The petition is a variance, applicant is Allison Dolan Wilson, property located at 68 Hovey Place. Allison Dolan Wilson has applied to the Lowe's of Appeals, seeking approval to build a farmer's porch on the front of their house. The property is located in the suburban, single-family zoning district and requires a variance under section 5.1 for front yard setback and any other relief required under Lowe's orders. Good, good evening, ma'am. You want to state your name, address, and just tell a little about your project?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Allison Dolan Wilson, at 68 Hovey Place, and looking to put a 30 by 6 farmer's porch on the front of my home.
Awesome. All right. There's no further comments, we'll just open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition, seeing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Now we'll open up questions and comments to the board. The chair organizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just looking at DPD's comments, I, I would attest, I would agree. I, I think that, you know, that this request is minimal. I don't think there will be any derogation to the property. It's, it's a nice setback. It won't be a nice sore putting a, extending the porch. I, I, again, I, I think this should not be an issue, but I'll be voting in favor, unless there is something that I'm not aware of.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Minimal relief is being requested, so I, I, I'll absolutely support it, and I do believe that, that you will make the chief designing planner very happy, because he indicates that if you do this tastefully, and you represent yourself as someone that would do this project very tastefully, it'll add character to the, to the home and improve the neighborhood.
I did say that people might plant a Pinterest board off of the porch, that will happen.
Well, we're counting on you, don't let us down.
I'll report back.
Thank you, dear.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I agree with my fellow board members. I do ask about the placement of the farmer's porch in relation to the structure of the house, only because the site plan that you're presenting shows it more or less centered on the overall length of the house, which is offset from the front door. And it looks like the house may have been built in two phases, where it was once, you know, maybe 30 feet wide along, and then got a maybe 15 or 12-foot extension to it.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that, about if it was built in phases. But you're right, it's not going the full length of that. And that's because, to the right, where there will not be the farmer's porch, is a bay window, and it's my favorite place to sit when it snows. And if the farmer's porch were to go over, it would block the light, and I didn't want that to happen.
So your intention is to start the farmer's porch after the bay window?
Correct.
And before the sliding glass doors on the other end?
To the end of that sliding glass door, yeah. It goes to, it'll go to the end of it.
It'll overhang the?
Not overhang, it'll go, so if you're looking at it, it'll take up about like, 3/4 of the house.
Okay, so the sliding glass doors basically are at the end of the house? And the farmer's porch will end at the sliding glass doors?
Correct, yes.
And the edge of the house?
Yep.
So that doesn't match the site plan?
Is it a little bit, I might be saying it wrong. I mean, the builder says, so you'll be able to exit the sliding glass doors onto the farmer's porch?
Yes.
Oh yeah, so it ends at the sliding glass door? Am I saying this incorrectly?
No, you're saying it exactly the way I think you're right. In order for you to get onto the Pinterest list, you're not to do it that way.
Yes, I know, you need the sliding glass door to exit. Let me, I want to pull it up. See if I'm looking at it correctly.
All right. Unfortunately, this isn't going to be a slam dunk, because the site plan indicates an 8-foot offset. I think if you slide the porch right to the corner, you're gonna be close to a 6-foot offset. I think you're asking for a little more relief than 8 feet. Well, I think it's 10 feet is the relief. Anyway, I think the relief that you're asking for is more than, when you, when you place it correctly.
I see what you're saying now, yeah. It is supposed to go over that.
I don't know. Peter, what do you suggest we do here? We're gonna slide the porch to the corner of the house. That would be the southeast corner, basically, or as close to that corner as possible. And right now, we're showing it ending quite a bit north of that corner.
And this is moot, but I will say that where it says the edge of the roadway, I now know the difference between road and street, because I actually thought that was all of my front yard, much to my dismay, that is not my front yard, nor is it a street, apparently. It's a private way.
Yeah.
So, the whole time, I thought it was actually gonna be more like 33 feet setback, but again, based on what the actual edge of the property is. And now that I see that there's space for people to comment, I had both of my next-door neighbors on that side and the other side offering to come in and make comments to say they're well in favor of it.
I just don't want you to have to come back.
I agree, thank you for that.
Because when you get your contractor to sign up for this and he goes to the building department, the building department says,
You only gave, yeah, exactly.
That's not what you submitted for the site plan, for the variance. The, the easy answer is to have a revised site plan done, or to work with DPD to develop a site plan to show the farmer's porch ending at the southeast corner of the main house, the main structure, and to indicate a variance setback of no less than 5 feet, maybe, just as a way to solve this.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, to have a condition, possibly something as, as that? Okay. I think we could do that, if my fellow board members want to support me. We could maybe go forward with this with that kind of variance, basically saying that the porch will be slid to the edge of the southeast corner of the structure, and we'll have a setback no less than 5 feet from the property line. I think you'll be well within that when you get there, but anyway. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan. Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Farmer's porch, eh, so you plan on doing a lot of farming?
Yes, a lot. I'm very good with herbs, but that's about it. I can't do any other vegetables.
No, it's, this, this makes total sense. And, yeah, I agree with what Dennis says, that, no, you're gonna have to work with the site plan a bit, and I would agree to a condition, just have the new site plan submitted for DPD to approve, so that way, again, we, you know, we don't want you to have to come back and say, well.
Thank you, good call.
So, but, yeah, this, now, this is, maybe full favor of this, this makes total sense. It'll make, I'm sure it'll make your property look very lovely, and looking forward to seeing all the photos on Pinterest.
It's gonna be amazing.
Instagram and Facebook and everywhere else, especially during Christmas time, where it's all lit up like a Christmas tree. Best of luck, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Callahan. Ms. Dolan Wilson, I, I would agree with my colleagues. I think this is very minimal relief that you're seeking, and also, great, great feedback from Mr. McCarthy in terms of the updated site plan. It gives you that latitude to kind of play a little bit with, with the spacing, if that makes sense, so you don't have to come back when you have your contract and, and building and all that. You know, I, I've only gotten just positive feedback from this petition. You know, a lot of people support it. Again, I think it's really keeping to the, kind of the roots, this farmer porch to the roots of Lowell and kind of the industrial revolution, that, that kind of mill-city, kind of like, roots that we have here. So I, I think it's a great addition, and, you know, it's, it's always a great thing when, when, when we can just highlight something like that in Lowell, and, you know, no one's against it, so that's always a plus. So I, I have no, no, no reservations on this. I think it'd be not just a, a big win for you, but a, a big win for the property and for the city of Lowell and all the kind of positive publicity that you, that we'll get from this farmer's house in your home. So I, I do wish you the best of luck, ma'am. So I guess the only comment is the updated site plan. You submit, and then we can go forward with the, with the vote.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Okay, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-31 for variance at 68 Hovey Place for a front yard setback variance with the following condition, that the applicant provide a revised site plan showing the relocated porch to align with the southeast corner of the main structure, and to have a setback of no less than 5 feet from the property line.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Briere. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Member Briere.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve with condition.
All right, this, this item's been approved. We wish you the best of luck, ma'am. Thank you for coming out this evening. Have a good night, thank, thank you again.
Much, I appreciate it.
Yes, congratulations, thank you, ma'am. Moving on to our next agenda item, under other business, we have minutes for approval for June 13th, 2022, meeting minutes. Do you have any added comments, revisions? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of 6:13, 2022.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to approve the minutes of? Second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve the minutes of June 13th.
Member Callahan.